Okay, if we could get everyone to please take their seats, we'll call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen for Monday, February 25th, 2019. Before, if we stand for the pledge and the silent prayer, I would ask everyone this evening to keep in your prayers Lisa Stokes-Vallez, who passed away very prematurely last week, who was a very important member of the Waterbury community overall, the neighborhood organization, and particularly the Brooklyn neighborhood, which she served and fought for very well. So we'll take a moment to remember her and please keep her in your prayers this evening. Okay, if we'll stand for the pledge and the silent prayer.
At Pledge of Allegiance, do deliver the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on foundation under God, indivisible, and with equal justice and moral.
Mike Dalton is mending, he's been back to work for a week and a half, but his doctor told him he can't be on his feet for 10 hours, so he wasn't able to make it here tonight, but he told me today he expects he'll be at our next meeting. So keep Mike in your thoughts as well, but he seems to be healing quite well. With that, I will call the role Alderman Brunelli.
Present.
Alderman Cavalo.
Present.
Alderman Cotto.
Here.
Alderman Dorso.
Here.
Alderman Giacomi.
Here.
Alderman Kula.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Matthews.
Present.
Alderman Martinez-McCarthy.
Here.
Alderman Napoli.
Here.
Alderman Nujaim.
Present.
Alderman Sherman.
Here.
Alderman Weaver.
Here.
And I am here, so there's 15 present, we have a quorum. With that, we will go to public speaking. Anyone who wishes to address the board, please sign up with Mr. Conway, the city sheriff. Please state your name and address for the record. There is a five-minute limit, and I will give you a one-minute heads-up. Mr. Sheriff, if you'd call the first speaker.
First speaker tonight from 144 West Main Street, Robert Burns.
I'm Robert Burns from the Matta Tuck Museum at 144 West Main Street here in Waterbury. Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen of the Board of Aldermen, I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of item four on your agenda, requesting approval of an Historic Restoration Fund Assistance Agreement for the restoration of the historic M.A. Green clock located on Bank Street in the city of Waterbury. Morris A. Green founded the M.A. Green store in Waterbury in 1898. The successor to M.A. Green, Lux Bond &amp; Green, continues to operate to this day in Hartford, 121 years later. In August 1921, Morris A. Green ordered a street clock from Seth Thomas, and it was installed on Grand Street on November 4th, 1921. The clock is a rare 17-foot-tall two-dial clock, one of only 280 street clocks that were built over a 70-year period by Seth Thomas. In 1932, M.A. Green purchased Lux Bond &amp; Lux Jewelers and renamed the store Lux Bond &amp; Green. In November of 1936, Lux Bond &amp; Green moved from Grand Street to 117 Bank Street, and the clock was moved by the Seth Thomas Company to its current location. The clock has always had the words "M.A. Green" on the top and is listed on the National Register. When the Waterbury branch of Lux Bond &amp; Green was closed in 1992, the clock was gifted to the city and was accepted by the Board of Aldermen in January of 1993. The significance of this historic clock cannot be overstated and has been recognized by the State Historic Preservation Office through the approval of this Restoration Fund Assistance. The project to restore the clock dovetails directly into two nearby restoration reuse projects recently completed in the city of Waterbury: the restoration reuse of the Brown Building and the Howland Hughes Building. Both buildings, also on the National Register, have been thoughtfully restored and are adding to the beauty, history, and economic development of the neighborhood. The restoration of the M.A. Green clock will add significantly to the streetscape of downtown Waterbury, and I respectfully ask for your support of this request. Thank you for the opportunity to address this important issue.
Next speaker from 41 John Street, Frank Perella.
Good evening, my name is Frank Perella, and I'm a member of the Brooklyn Neighborhood Association. I've come to speak about Article 10 tonight, but it's gonna be bittersweet. The sweet part is, if it's approved, the bitter part is Lisa Vallez, who was in the forefront of this, is not standing here right now. So it's difficult for us to celebrate the park at this point, knowing that Lisa's not going to be there, she'll be there in spirit. But what I'd like to do is just take a few minutes and talk about the history of the neighborhood and its recreation that it's had over the years. The only one I think on that side of the aisle who understands what I'm saying or can envision would be Mr. Brunelli, because he's the, seems to be the oldest one there. Growing up in that neighborhood, you had the Brooklyn Athletic Club, 1899, for 70 years it was there, recreation. You had the Brooklyn YMCA. Many people don't know it was a YMCA in Brooklyn, along with downtown and the one in the north end. If you know where St. Patrick's Church is, many of you have been there. Just imagine walking out of St. Patrick's Church, which you're back to the church door, looking straight across, you'd see multiple, multiple, multiple three-family homes. If you look down to the left, you would envision the firehouse, engine number three, and right next door was the Brooklyn YMCA. Same spot, you turn to the right, Porter Street intersects Charles Street. You had Porter Street School and Bagnall School. The Brooklyn Y burned in 1954. Bagnall School was closed and became the Waterbury Yukon. Waterbury's first branch of Yukon was on on Charles Street, next to my mother's house. When Yukon purchased a hillside land area, the city took over Bagnall School and it became a recreation center. Across the street, Porter Street School was knocked down, we had what you might call a playground. In 1957, the city leased for $1 a year, the Anaconda, where First Light is now on Washington Avenue, used that parking lot, huge parking lot, two baseball fields and so forth. For $1 a year, it leased it. In the early '70s, for some reason, they thought they didn't need it anymore, the park was closed. The highway came, destroyed everything, Porter Street Playground was gone. Bagnall School, where the Seven Angels actually began, and now is a thriving part of the city, community, was there. In its wisdom, the recreation center that was Bagnall School now became an entity, was knocked down, and the projects were put up. I don't like calling them projects, they're condominiums. You knocked down all of the recreational facilities, there was nothing there, and yet they have projects teeming with children, have no place to play. So I implore this board that has the power to purchase that land, so it can be used as a recreation center, playground, what have you, for the kids of the neighborhood. They have nothing there. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker from 14 Quentin Street, Steve Shraggs.
Good evening, my name is Steve Shraggs, I live at 14 Quentin Street. We wish to speak briefly regarding item number 10 on your agenda. We wish to present this symbolic check. To the city of Waterbury for $50,000 to purchase the land on 990 Bank Street. We have already provided the city with the actual check. We look forward to seeing the dream of Lisa Vallez, the Brooklyn neighborhood, the neighborhood council, and the rest of us become a reality. As was said before, it's incredibly bittersweet that Lisa's not here to see this come to fruition, but we look forward to the city fulfilling this dream. Thank you very much.
Next speaker from 58 Valley View Drive, Bill Wyerman Sr.
Thank you, thank you for allowing me this tonight. I'm gonna talk a little bit about Brooklyn. We started our business there, 41 and a half years ago. And I believe tonight, after seeing all these people, and what I heard and followed through the years, I believe that you should approve this tonight. And I believe the name of the park should be Lisa Vallez Memorial Park. Brooklyn's a wonderful place. It's changed, the faces have changed, but the warmth and the courage of people there has never changed. I also, that's not the reason I came tonight, but honestly, I do believe that. The reason I came tonight was to tell you a small story about a city that I believe doesn't know what they want to be. We are gonna have, I know tonight you're going to put out the bid, a new brand for the city of Waterbury. And I don't, I don't understand something. It's been said that Waterbury especially, after researching all this, that Waterbury's best asset is our people, the people that live here. And it's also been said that Waterbury over the years, basically the brass industry when it was here, which is long gone, we all know that, has touched every part of the world. Well, I'm here to tell you that it wasn't the brass industry, it was the people that served from Waterbury, all over the world. From the fellow that lived here in Waterbury, who loaded the bomb on Ian Olagay, to, I believe it was Father Connolly, who actually was on a ship when it went down, and that ship carried that bomb, which saved millions of lives. When any time the world called, Waterbury answered. 25% of the Civil War veterans from Connecticut came through Waterbury. It's amazing. And we've had this all this time, and no one's really looked at it. We are a city of heroes. We don't know it yet, or some of us do, but everything we do, every corner of the road, Waterbury has touched it. If we needed help, someone needed help, we were there. In Waterbury, ourselves, if someone's hurting in Waterbury, regardless if we argue with them or not, we come back and we help that person if they need help. We stand on each other's shoulders, that's how this city was built. Last October, myself and my wife, in a Waterbury paper, paid for a full page, and it says on this page, which some of you may have seen it, "It's time and long overdue," and it's an open letter for myself and my wife Joan. Waterbury has a distinction of having two Medal of Honor recipients. They didn't win the award, you can't win a Medal of Honor, you presented it. It also has three Navy Cross recipients, which I believe there should be four with Father Conway. 16 distinguished service cross recipients. My question is, we've all been given a gift, why don't we use it? We know what we are already, we are the city of heroes. I can foresee in the future, coming down Route 84, Waterbury, Connecticut, city of heroes, feel our greatness, feel our pride. There's a sign there now that says Waterbury, Connecticut. If this goes onto the internet, and I'm not faulting anyone here, and we just have Waterbury Y, I say Waterbury Y now.
One minute, Mr. Wildman.
Thank you, that's all it'll take. I ask you all tonight, when this goes out to bid, please remember the ones who gave the most and who we should honor. Don't throw it away, you're gonna get one shot at this, to make us great, so we can decide either Waterbury Y or Waterbury, Connecticut, city of heroes, feel our greatness, feel our pride. Thank you.
Next speaker from 66 Oak Hill Avenue, Carl Rosa.
Good evening, my name is Carl Rosa, and I reside at 66 Oak Hill Avenue. And I'm here to speak in favor of the restoration and renovation of the Seth Thomas M.A. Green street clock situated on Bank Street in downtown Waterbury, and to request your approval of the Historic Fund Assistance Agreement and its required local match. Prior to my current role as CEO of Main Street Waterbury, I was the first director of Timex Museum, later called Timexpo, and during that time, I was a member of the National Association of Watch and Clock Collectors, and it was 26,000 members across the country with local chapters in every state. And as such, I had contact with many clock repair people from around the country, but predominantly in New England and Connecticut. Most are familiar with our M.A. Green clock in downtown Waterbury, as its reputation precedes it in the clock world, particularly among clock repair experts and enthusiasts. The fact of the matter is, there just aren't many of these street clocks left that still operate with a mechanical brass movement like ours does. Many have either been converted to electric movements, or been lost through neglect, or our new design and construction with no historic integrity. So we're very fortunate that our clock is mechanically still capable of running, but it's in dire need of a full renovation and restoration, in and outside. It too falls victim to neglect that would put it beyond the feasibility of repair if we don't do anything about it. Waterbury of late has demonstrated really good stewardship of our public buildings and our spaces. One can point to this beautiful building that we're standing in tonight, the Palace Theater in our beautiful green as examples. So the M.A. Green clock, while of a much smaller scale, is no less significant to our historic identity in this respect. I think we owe it to ourselves, to our history, and to our revitalization efforts for downtown Waterbury to take advantage of this unique and exciting opportunity and ensure that this beautiful timepiece can be enjoyed for generations to come before time runs out. Thanks.
Next speaker from 124 Maybrook Road, Laura Nesta.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the Board of Aldermen. Thank you very much for taking the time out of your day and having the opportunity to hear the public speak. I do appreciate the commitment that it takes not to just be here every two weeks, but certainly to be so involved in your community. And that's really why I want to take this opportunity. And for those of you who don't know, I've been a longstanding member of the Brooklyn Neighborhood Association, I was a resident decades ago, but continue to be involved because it's important, it's really important to be part of the fabric of the community. Also a member of the Waterbury Neighborhood Council, and there are many people here who are also members of the council. But in particular, I'd really like to ensure that you are aware that Crystal Vallez is here, and Crystal is Lisa Vallez's oldest daughter. And really, on her behalf, I want to ask you to approve item number 10, which is the purchase of the property on Bank Street. Now, I appreciate the purchase is pretty straightforward, and that we've been able to give you some subsidy through the Environmental Health Commission to make this happen. The harder work, I think, really is the next steps that we have to go forward and move along with. The members of the Waterbury Neighborhood Council, Lisa's family, Brooklyn neighborhood, are all committed to working with you to ensure that this park happens. Brooklyn has long been an underserved, unrecognized neighborhood that has many challenges. But for those of you who knew Lisa, and I know probably everyone here did, she never gave up fighting, she always cared for the kids and the family. You know, I was here long ago before there was Duggan School, and for those of you who had the opportunity to see Duggan, it's incredible, it's a real cornerstone for that neighborhood. Brooklyn Neighborhood Association itself is a very small but mighty group, and raised money to recognize those individuals from Brooklyn who perished during the flood of 1955. The last piece I think this triad needs is the creation of a park. Lisa has always been an active proponent of our police force, particularly community policing, and had long wanted that park to be named in honor of Vinnie Riddick, who was a Brooklyn native, but also I think probably one of our first, if not our first, community police officers. We would like to work closely with the family about the naming of that park, and certainly needs to have Vinnie Riddick's name in it, but somehow to incorporate Lisa. Neighborhood Council's committed to fundraise, to work with our state reps, our Board of Aldermen, we know we have to come up with money, it's challenging to do, but we're not gonna let this go. So we appreciate this as a first step, we promise to be here to continue to work on this in honor of Lisa and recognition of her family, I'd like to ask for your approval. Thank you.
Next speaker from 11 Steuben Street, Lawrence V. DePillo.
Good evening, Lawrence DePillo from 11 Steuben Street. Your item nine tonight, Mayor O'Leary has vowed to remove this from the agenda. That's the Prospect Base Works Group LLC proposal for $180,000. He said he decided to withdraw the request and submit a job to competitive process by issuing a request for a proposal. Said he became aware of the potential concerns after the Republican Americans submitted questions. Normally, city contracts in excess of $10,000 go through a competitive bidding process. What is being proposed is not competitive bidding, but a request for a proposal. Furthermore, let's make sure if it is a request for a proposal, it has at least 90-day window to allow for as many proposals as possible, not 10 days. The list of firms should include companies that do this type of marketing in neighboring states. Furthermore, the committee to evaluate the request for a proposal should consist of representatives from one of our largest manufacturing companies, a representative from one of the two hospitals, a representative from the Neighborhood Council, a representative from the Board of Aldermen, a representative from the Board of Education, as well as the purchasing director. One suggested floated locally was not only to have a professional organization submit an appropriate logo, but to maybe put out a $250 or $500 prize, open to the general Waterbury public and its businesses, to submit a logo as well. And then let a committee go through and see which logo should get the approval from the Waterbury residents. I bring you back to Alderman by District, and a proposal that was made by then a state representative that certainly mirrored what we ultimately ended up with after a bizarre proposal from a professional. Tonight, item 10, you're being asked to sign off on $50,000 for 909 Bank Street. The money's coming from the Community Benefits Fund set up by First Light Power for building the power plant on Washington Avenue. A recent environmental study produced a cleanup estimate of about $130,000. So what's the deal? A private community benefit fund made up of local neighborhood leaders bought the property for the city for a park. That is promised, the residents of Brooklyn Neighborhood, that's been promised to them for over a decade and a half, and nothing's happened. The city doesn't yet have the funding sources for the cleanup or construction of the park, nor a schedule for performing the work. What does that mean? Brooklyn waits another decade or decade and a half? After buying the land, the city will hold a public forum to hear the community preferences officials said. Well, how about the Board of Aldermen set a public hearing tonight, so that the public can come out on the Brooklyn Park and let you know what their preferences are, instead of letting it linger for another decade or decade and a half while the city decides to find funds, after the community benefit fund paid $50,000 so the city could buy it? Representative Reyes said he's seen two preliminary designs. One would place basketball carts on the site, he prefers the alternative that would install one court in a playscape. Has anybody else seen the plans? Has the Brooklyn neighborhood residents seen the plans? Yet Representative Reyes, he's instead using cash and looking for state funds to build a new park on Mill Street. And the Brooklyn Park and the Brooklyn residents are being told to take a backseat yet again.
One minute, Mr. DePillo.
Is this city expecting the community benefit fund? The local residents that are using that money for good deeds to pay for the cleanup and building of that park? While Representative Reyes builds yet another park that was never even on the drawing board prior to a few months ago? Is that what this is all about? Let's get the city's priorities in order, and the Brooklyn Park is waited long enough and should come before any new park, and let the entire Brooklyn neighborhood residents see the preliminary plans and have input on what that park should look like. And I ask that this board not approve a dime for any new park until Brooklyn Park is finally built. This board, this city has dragged its feet long enough. No other new park should be put before Brooklyn. Thank you.
Next speaker from 1400 Merritton Road, Martin Spring.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Board of Aldermen, Martin Lee Vining Spring, 1400 Merritton Road. I'm looking at number four on the agenda, Requesting Approval Historical Restoration for Assistance Agreement with the State Department of Economic and Community Development to be used to improve the clock by Webster Bank, and I believe that's where it is, on the corner. I just brought this to my attention, I mean, I don't know if this is going out to bid, it seems to me that $26,450 requires local match from the city of $26,975, so we're talking about maybe almost $50,000, $60,000, something thousand dollars when this is all said and done. The thing is, I don't understand, you know, Webster Bank is right there, I believe it's right on the corner, they have it enhanced, everything, if Webster Bank would contribute some monies, if you will, to this, I think that would be a good idea. I don't know if you guys on the Board of Aldermen would like to go out and have this, put this on the bid, but to me, this is an awful lot of money, and I know there's people here before me speaking, and they're friends of mine, I'm not saying it to be disrespectful, but I am a Waterbury taxpayer, I live in the city of Waterbury, and I just think maybe you guys should have a second thought on this. Okay, and the other thing with Linda T. Webby, and she's a good friend of mine too, by the way, Requesting Approval of the Proposed Contract Between the Work Group LLC and the City of Waterbury, which $180,000 and $15,000 a month. I'm glad this is getting pulled off the agenda. board prior to a few months ago? Is that what this is all about? Let's get the city's priorities in order, and the Brooklyn Park is rated long enough and should come before any new park. And let the entire Brooklyn Neighborhood residents see the preliminary plans and have input on what that park should look like. And I ask that this board not approve a dime for any new park until Brooklyn Park is finally built. This board, this city has dragged its feet long enough. No other new park should be put before Brooklyn. Thank you.
Next speaker from 1400 Merritton Road, Martin Spring.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, Board of Aldermen, Martin Lee Vining Spring, 1400 Merritton Road. I'm looking at number four on the agenda, Requesting Approval Historical Restoration for Assistance Agreement with the State Department of Economic and Community Development to be used to improve the clock by Webster Bank. And I believe that's where it is, on the corner. I just brought this to my attention. I mean, I don't know if this is going out to bid. It seems to me that $26,450 requires local match from the city of $26,975. So we're talking about maybe almost $50,000, $60,000-something thousand when this is all said and done. The thing is, I don't understand, you know, Webster Bank is right there. I believe it's right on the corner. They have enhanced everything. If Webster Bank would contribute some monies, if you will, to this, I think that would be a good idea. I don't know if you guys on the Board of Aldermen would like to go out and have this, put this on the bid. But to me, this is an awful lot of money. I know there's people here before me speaking, and they're friends of mine. I'm not saying that to be disrespectful, but I am a Waterbury taxpayer. I live in the city of Waterbury, and I just think maybe you guys should have a second thought on this. Okay. And the other thing with Linda T. Webby, and she's a good friend of mine too, by the way, Requesting Approval of the Proposed Contract Between the Work Group LLC and the City of Waterbury, which $180,000 and $15,000 a month. I'm glad this is getting pulled off the agenda because I think this is another thing that should go out to bid. You know, I came here during the public hearing. I did speak, and I saw the graphics and everything on there. And I also said I was the first one out of the chute to say that people from the Waterbury Neighborhood Council or the Waterville Community Club, or somebody like that, should participate and get involved as ambassadors. I think that's something you guys should look at. I know I don't have a lot of time, so I'm going to move on as quick as I can, Mr. President. Because I know you're going to say, Martin, come on, you're out of time over here. Okay. There's another thing I want to say, as far as, I got to find that other piece now for Lisa Velez. Okay. The Purchase and Sale Agreement of the City's Purchase of a Vacant Parcel Located 909 Bank Street, Waterbury, Connecticut and Enterprises. The thing is, I just want to tell you people, maybe you don't know, and some of you do, but Lisa Velez and I go back, and I'm glad her daughter's here. She was like a good, close friend of mine, a sister. I've known Lisa for over 20 years. We started with the Waterbury Neighborhood Council on Prospect Street. My daughter was a little baby when we got involved, and we did so many things together. I know we had our Neighborhood Council. We had the dinner October 25th. And to the mayor's credit and Lisa's, I don't know why, but they all sang "Happy Birthday", and I didn't want to give my age away, but I'm getting up there. But it was, that's the kind of person Lisa was. She wasn't feeling that good. Everybody knew that. She wasn't feeling good at all, and she still showed up, and she showed up for all our committee meetings. Laura knows that. Lex knows that. Everybody in this room knows that. We met constantly, constantly, and there's some people who aren't here right now, and we were always involved. She came to my house for her PT Cruiser. I got tires for her car. Turned around, and I put a battery in her car, put a memory lock in there, because on these new cars, if you don't put the memory lock, the computer's going to go haywire, and she's going to lose all the information within the car with the computer. So I did that, and she came over to my house, and I know she wasn't feeling good, and I did everything I could to help this poor woman out. And most people were charging an awful lot of money. I did it for next to nothing because Lisa's a good friend of mine.
One minute, Mr. Spring.
One minute?
One minute.
Okay. Well, I have more things to say, but this is more important about Lisa. I could talk about other things later on. And I want everybody to know that I love that woman with all my heart and soul. She was so good, and, you know, she did so many things for the community, and she was on my show with Frank more than once. I know she ran for state rep. I helped her out on that. She did so many things within the community. Duggan School, too numerous to name. You people that know, but, you know, I know a lot of you people know her really well. She came to Waterville Community Club. So I just want to say this. You know, she's the same age as my sister Lauren, born 1963. Her birthday is going to be, I believe, February 26th. And, you know, God rest her soul. She was a beautiful person, and you guys got to do what you can to work with this park and maybe even name the park after her or hyphenated, whatever you got to do, because I'm telling you, she did so much, I could write a biography. And I'm going to speak more about Lisa in the future, and I want to let you know with some emphasis, I am definitely going to be coming back here. I'm going to be like an old hound dog over here, because you guys got to do something. And you heard us from a Republican too. Thank you.
Next speaker from 112 Concord Street, Thomas Pelletier.
Thomas Pelletier. Real quickly, item number four, I would ask that you guys pass this. You know, as we continue to refurbish our downtown and preserve and make new again our buildings in downtown Waterbury, it's only fitting that we refurbish our past because a lot of what we're celebrating today was built in the past, and we should do anything we can to preserve our past because our past is our future, and we're moving on. Secondly, item number 10 on your agenda, the Brooklyn Park. As Park Commissioner, I could remember countless times that Mrs. Velez came to us, and she was a real advocate with the Brooklyn Neighborhood Association for this park, for many other things in Brooklyn. And I think that it would only be rightfully so that we continue to work hard to get this. This is a start. It is going to be a process. Things can't be done overnight, but we are committed to making sure that that gets done. And to say here tonight that, you know, nothing should be done until we finish that, and somehow monies aren't being used in the right way, you know, I just thought that that was appalling. This mayor has been committed to getting that park done, has been working with the Brooklyn Neighborhood Association, and I just thought that it was wrong to make such accusations as tonight. We remember such a hard-working individual, and I give a lot of these people credit, most of them I know. And working in Duggan School, I see them out there every day, working hard. You know, they fought to bring back Brooklyn. They continue to fight to bring back Brooklyn. And me, as an employee for the city, is going to do everything I can, and not only as an employee, but a citizen and a commissioner, to help them do that. And thirdly, on the, let me find it here. You know, there were comments tonight about the item number nine, going back. Yes, I agree with the mayor that we should put this out to bid and look into this, but the same individual who was hyped up about this going back out to re-bid and now says that we need to seek people from outside the state of Connecticut, who, and every other item, has asked us to seek people in the city of Waterbury or near the city of Waterbury. I mean, I don't, I don't know how many times you could contradict yourself, but let's get it right. Let's do the right thing for the city, and let's move forward. Thank you.
Mr. President, that's the last speaker tonight.
Thank you. With that, the next item on the agenda would be the approval of the minutes for the meeting of Monday, February 11th, 2019. Is there a motion?
Motion approved the minutes of the regular meeting on Monday, February 11th, 2019. So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Brunelli, seconded by Alderman. Napoli, before we vote, the only thing I would note on the minutes is in the, under the roll call, for those present, we need to substitute Alderman Weaver for Alderman Hadley. So as much as we like him and miss him, he was not here last week, we need to put Alderman Weaver in there. Are there any other changes to the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The motion carries, and the minutes are approved. Before we go into the committees, just a couple of things you should have in front of you. A document from Mike LeBlanc regarding a letter of agreement with EverSource Energy for a $742,552 energy efficiency financial incentive to retrofit the city's street lighting to LED. This, we were given the notification letter on February 7th. According to Corporation Council, we need to get it signed within 30 days of there, which will take it beyond our next, our next meeting will be beyond that. So we would need to add this to tonight's agenda to take action on it. So I would entertain a motion to add this as new business item number 11 and to refer to the Finance Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Made by Alderman Brunelli, seconded by Alderman Napoli. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the motion passes unanimously. I would also note that you should have in front of you a revised budget transfer from the Capital Improvement Fund for fiscal year 2019. That relates to new business item number six. This document would substitute for the one in the original package because with the withdrawal of item number nine, there was money in there to fund that contract that's no longer needed to be moved around. So all that's left is the $26,975 for the clock restoration. So that's the item that we should act on tonight. I would note, as been pointed out, that item number nine has been withdrawn. And I think with that, we've covered everything we needed to do before we go into committees. So with that, we'll recess into committees, and we'll start with the Intergovernmental and then go to Finance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to call into order the Intergovernmental Committee meeting scheduled for February 25th, 2019. Our first item on the agenda is item number five. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approves a budget transfer within the city's general fund budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2019, in the amount of $392,569, as submitted by Sarah A. Gary, Policy and Budget Management Specialist. Alderman Napoli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Motion to approve item number five.
Second.
Excuse me, Sarah Gary, Policy and Budget Management Specialist. Budget transfers typically go to the Finance Committee. Items number five and six are budget transfers.
Mr. President?
There's two budget transfers that the agenda had, the Intergovernmental Committee. They typically go to the Finance Committee.
I have them. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, I have, so item number five has been motioned, and I have a second. Any discussion on item number five? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Next item, item number six. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approves a budget transfer within the city's Capital Improvement Fund for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2019, in the amount of $26,975, as submitted by Sarah A. Gary, Policy and Budget Management Specialist. Alderman Napoli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Motion to approve the revised version of item number six.
Second.
I have a motion to approve item number six, which has been seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, item number seven. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approves the Third Amendment to the lease within 500 Connecticut LLC for the property located at 500 Captain Neville Drive, that this is currently occupied by Central Vehicle Maintenance and the Bureau of Refuge, as submitted by David B. Simpson. Alderman Napoli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Motion that we approve, item number seven.
Second.
I have a motion to approve item number seven, which has been seconded. Any discussion on item number seven? Alderman Matthews.
Good evening, Mr. Simpson. Just a quick question. How much of this property is actually going to be subbed out to this group that's going to be renting from us?
David Simpson, Director of Public Works. What's going to happen in this circumstance is we have leased the whole property. It's a total of $56,857 square feet. Our current landlord, 500 Connecticut LLC, has requested that, or encouraged us, suggested that we allow them to lease $34,000 of that to a prospective tenant they have. So they will release us from lease options for that part that are valid until June 30th of this year.
Okay. Thanks.
So just to make sure, Mr. Simpson, so you're actually, we will continue to occupy roughly about 20,000 square feet?
Right now, we won't be occupying any space. We have vacated the property, but we have a current lease with the landlord through June. The landlord has a tenant for a portion of it and is actively looking for a tenant for the other portion, but the city is still responsible for that section until the end of June.
Okay, so although the documents state that we have to be out of there by March 1st, this is just making it official? Is that what's going on?
The document, the landlord has asked us to vacate that portion of it so they can begin the renovations for their prospective tenant, and they'd like to do that starting March 1st, yes.
Excellent, thank you. Any further discussion on item number seven? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, item number eight. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approves a state-of-Connecticut Purchase of Service contract at no cost for the support of pregnant and parenting teens, women, fathers, and their families SPPT program. This is subject to the approval of the Board of Ed meeting, which was scheduled February 21st, 2019, as submitted by Carrie A. Swain, Clerk, Waterbury Board of Education. Alderman Napoli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Motion to approve item eight.
Second.
I have a motion to approve item number eight, which has been seconded. Any discussion? Mr. Gorman, how are you today?
Doing well, thank you.
Mr. Gorman, I only have one request. On the document, it states that there is a mid-year report, which is scheduled to be submitted by April 15th.
Correct.
Sir, would you be kind enough to send us a copy of that report, please?
Certainly.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion on item number eight?
No.
Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you.
At this moment, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn, which has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? We are adjourned.
I call the Finance Committee meeting to order. Item number two, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a refund request from Vivint Solar Developer LLC in the amount of $405 for a canceled electrical permit, permit PR 20180002860 for 14 Klein Avenue, as submitted by E. Gill, Grave Line, Building Official, Department of Inspections.
Motion to approve item number two.
Second.
We have a motion to approve in a second, discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion to approve in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Item number three, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a refund request from Total Interiors LLC in the amount of $6,840 for the following canceled electric permits listed on agenda, item number three, for 296 Austin Road, as submitted by E. Gill, Grave Line, Building Official, Department of Inspections.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion to approve in a second, discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion's approved. Item four, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a request of a Historic Restoration Fund Assistance Agreement with the State Department of Economic and Community Development to be used for improvements to the historic MA Green Clock located at 117 Bank Street. The assistance agreement is for $26,450, which requires a local match from the city in the amount of $26,975, as submitted by Michael LeBlanc, Director of Finance.
Motion to approve item number four.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, discussion? Discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Item number 10, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a purchase and sale agreement for the city's purchase of a vacant parcel located at 909 Bank Street, Waterbury, Connecticut, from Photos Enterprises LLC for a purchase price of $50,000 as submitted by Michael LeBlanc, Director of Finance.
Motion to approve item number 10.
Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Discussion? Alderman Sherman.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Nardozzi. Do we know if Photo Enterprises LLC is up to date on all their property taxes with the city?
Corporation Counsel will answer that. But for the record, James Nardozzi, interim CEO of Waterbury Development Corporation.
Thank you, Alderman. My understanding is they did not make the January installment payment, but we have a provision in the closing doc in the purchase and sale agreement that any taxes will be deducted from the purchase price.
Is this the only piece of property that this LLC owns?
Yes, and actually, they have worked very well. The attorney out of Bridgeport has worked very well in negotiating the purchase price, which is far below the assessed value and his purchase price, and he did want to assist the city of Waterbury in acquiring it for the park.
Thank you. Mr. Nardozzi, for you maybe, $45,000 to $130,000, where would we be seeking those funds from?
Thank you, Alderman. So, I appreciate the opportunity to talk about this project. Now, to put this project in...
I just hear a question. This is a...
Oh. Okay.
Thank you, Alderman. I'd like to give the board some additional information to clarify some past comments that were made by prior speakers. First of all, NVCog, Nogatuck Valley Cog, paid in full for all the environmental testing that was performed on the site. That's number one. Number two, we have already been in contact with NVCog and I have been drafting a letter to Cog requesting full assistance up to the worst-case scenario of $130,000 for environmental cleaning and removal of the underground storage tank there. So, we firmly believe that those funds will be coming from Cog. There is funding available. I've had discussions with the executive director.
No official response as of yet, though?
Well, no, I wasn't going to submit my letter until the board passed. If the board didn't pass it, I wasn't going to submit a written request. That will be submitted tomorrow if the full Board of Aldermen passes that. And lastly, to the prior comments made this evening about the design plans and splashpads, as far as I know, there's no plans that exist. I don't know where that information is coming from. Certainly, they're not in the possession of WDC. They haven't been ordered by WDC. Maybe there's some misinformation going out there, but we have no design plans. And pursuant to, and I'm not speaking since we have corp counsel here, but as I'm sure as many of the senior board members are aware, any improvement on a public property requires a public hearing under 824. So, we would have to have a public hearing. So, demanding whether it's the Board of Aldermen or anybody else, it's par for the course. We have a public hearing for every project that we do of a similar nature. So, I hope these comments have, I hope my answers rather have cleared up some of the misconceptions that may have been out there.
I do recall at the celebration of Brooklyn back in April of 2018 that there was a depiction of what they were hoping the park would look like.
Where that came from, it wasn't anything that we ordered, that we purchased, that we, I didn't contract with anybody for any design plans whatsoever.
Understood. I, this is off-topic as far as, I just wanted to speak on Lisa Velez. Lisa Velez was a wonderful friend of my family. I was, she was my landlord at one point. She was a wonderful woman. She got me involved in being involved with the city, joining the Neighborhood Association with my mother, and I am very sorry for your loss. Thank you very much.
Alderman, if I can echo that as well, during my brief tenure here at WDC, I've met several times with Lisa Velez. She was always a supporter of the city. I never heard anything come out of her mouth that wasn't a positive nature of what we were doing, and she was a great supporter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Item 11, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a letter of agreement with Eversource Energy and the City of Waterbury in the amount of $742,572, energy-efficient financial incentive for retrofit of city street lighting to LED as submitted by Michael LeBlanc, Director of Finance.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Alderman Sherman.
Thank you again. Thank you, Mike. I've had a resident reach out to me with concerns over a street light that has not been repaired for some time. She's reached out to the Streets Department and they've told her, at least she's informed me, that she was told that it would not be repaired until the lights are replaced. Is that our, is that how we're going forward with lights in the city that are out right now?
David Simpson, Director of Public Works. That is not our policy.
Okay.
At this point, the city has multiple ways, residents have multiple ways that they can report a streetlight problem. If they do call Eversource, Eversource is going to refer them to the City of Waterbury. They should not be calling our contractor. So, we have an electronic form on our website that sends an email to an email address called Weekly, I send in a list of streetlights to be repaired, and within 10 days after that goes to our contract, they are repaired. So, it's not an immediate repair, but three weeks is not abnormal. There have been some occasions where our contractor has gone out there, determined the problem was an Eversource problem. We then have to create a work order with Eversource. It goes to Eversource. So, there could be a delay. It could take longer than that, but there is a solid process to repair or replace the streetlights moving forward. If they have any questions or delays, they can call my office directly. I can take care of it.
We can do this via iReport as well, I assume?
Do it via iReport, do a Q Alert, call my office, give it to one of the, any one of the admin persons can get it to the right person that's reporting.
Thank you very much.
Further discussion?
Mike, can I just, do we have a plan of attack on what streets we're doing first and what areas we're going to be doing first as far as the lighting?
That is under development. There will be a plan, a strategy plan that'll be presented and gone over with Dave Simpson and his team for their evaluation and input, and then at that point, we would give the authorization to proceed. So, we're still a few weeks out before the process starts, but certainly in preparation for that, there will be part of the process again for the development of the areas that will be addressed throughout the city. And this will be amendable as we go through the process from the standpoint that if there's an area that's deemed a higher priority, be it that there's some fixtures that have gone out or there's other issues, again, Dave Simpson through working with the contractor will be able to adjust accordingly.
Thank you. Further discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no.
Thank you.
Standing, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve and authorize the Director of Finance to make refunds to taxpayers representing overpayments of tax bills in the amount of $227,120.21 submitted by Frank A. Caruso, Revenue Collection Manager.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Discussion?
I just have one question. I know we ask this often. The $91,000 refund, these are all just overpayments on all these refunds?
Yeah, they're overpayments that have either been through a situation where an actual overpayment has been made. That tends to happen a lot in January with the second installments where there's actually a third payment that comes in to the extent that you may have a mortgage company that is escrowing the real estate installments. And then the other piece of it would be where a taxpayer has paid their taxes but also filed an appeal, and when an ultimate stipulated agreement comes about or an adjustment on the assessment, then that generates the overpayment once the correction is put through the system.
So, some of these are appeals, then?
They haven't directly reviewed the list, but it's possible, yes.
Mike, in the future, or I don't know who is, is there any way we can actually see that if it's an appeal amount or just an overpayment? Just because when these, you know, the $35,000, the $19,000, when these ones come in, it is kind of concerning or what's going on to some of us. I know Alderman Sherman is definitely a big fan of the list and just seems it right that just to let us know if it's easier. If it's not, if it's a big issue, I just, you know, seems to, would ease our minds a little bit.
Yeah, I'll have a conversation with the tax collector on that.
Thank you. Further discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Entertaining a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
We are adjourned.
Just before we go back to the consent calendar, Steve has asked just for a photo of handing over the check, so we're going to do a quick photo op and then we'll finish up our business.
Hey, Mac, you got me? You got me? Should I get on a chair still?
Okay.
Okay.
My mother.
Oh, yeah? God bless her.
Yeah, Benadema's is bright.
Okay, with that, we will return to the regular order of business, and the following items are on the consent calendar. Item number one is receive and place on file. Item two is on consent to approve a refund request from Vivint Solar Developer in the amount of $405 for a canceled electrical permit for 14 Klein Avenue. Item three is on consent to approve refund requests from Total Interiors LLC in the amount of $684 for the canceled permits listed on the agenda under item number three. I'm not going to read them all. Item four is on consent to approve an Historic Restoration Fund Assistance Agreement with the State Department of Economic and Community Development to be used for improvements to the historic MA Green Clock. The assistance is $26,450, which requires a local match from the city of $26,975. Item number three is on approval to approve, is on the consent calendar to approve a budget transfer within the city's general fund budget for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2019 in the amount of $392,569. Item six is on consent to approve a budget transfer within the city's capital improvement fund for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2019 in the amount of $26,975. Item seven is on consent to approve the third amendment to the lease with 500 Connecticut LLC for property at 500 Captain Neville Drive. Item number eight is on consent to approve a State of Connecticut Purchase of Service Contract at No Cost for the Support of Pregnant and Parenting Teens Women Fathers and Their Families Program. Item number nine was withdrawn. Item 10 is on consent to approve a purchase and sale agreement for the city's purchase of a vacant parcel located at 909 Bank Street from Photos Enterprises LLC for a purchase price of $50,000. New business, item number 11 is on consent to approve a letter of agreement with Eversource Energy in the amount of $742,572 for energy efficiency financial incentives for the retrofit of the city's street lighting to LED. Is there a motion with respect to the consent calendar?
Motion approved. The consent calendar as read.
Second. Made by Alderman Brunelli, seconded by Alderman Napoli?
Napoli.
Seconded by Alderman Napoli. Are there any additions or deletions to the consent calendar? Hearing none, a yes vote would be to approve it as read, a no vote would be to disapprove it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The motion carries. The consent calendar is approved unanimously. With respect to standing committees, the chair would recognize Alderman D. Giovancarlo.
Mr. President, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve and authorize the Director of Finance to make refunds to taxpayers representing overpayments of tax bills in the amount of $227,120.21 submitted by Frank A. Caruso, Revenue Collection Manager.
Motion to approve?
Motion having been made by Alderman Martinez-McCarthy and seconded by Alderman Kula. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The motion carries. The refunds are approved. Just before we leave, I know it's a little bit early in the season, but I did want to give you a heads-up. The mayor has indicated that he would like to do his initial budget presentation to this board on April 1st at 7:00 PM here in the chamber, so we will be having a special meeting that night to do that, but I just, knowing that the time he wants to do it, I wanted to give you a heads-up so you can plan around that. So, we're looking at April 1st at 7:00 o'clock. You will be getting a notice for a special meeting. With that, is there anything else for the good of the order? Hearing none, Alderman Brunelli?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion having been made, seconded by Alderman Lopez. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The motion carries or adjourned. Thank you all very much. Have a great week.